Alright, thanks folks. This evening, looking to call to order our regular meeting of council Monday, December the 5th, for 7:00 PM. We have an agenda before us. I have not heard of any changes. Looking for approval of our agenda? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Public participation, so this is an opportunity for anyone in the public if they want to make comment to council. It's your chance to do that now. Doug? Yes? No? No? You're teasing us?
He's got a lot of complaints.
Alrighty. Moving on then, there is... In Mayor's message, there's been a few things that have been going on as the social season hits. This summer, I had been contacted by the Canada 150 organization, and they were looking for representatives throughout the capital region to come together and paint a four-by-four tile, which they gave us a color palette on our tables to utilize. So you had to...whatever you painted had to be with what was on your table. It was collaborated then into this overall piece of art by Kerry Newman, and it is 844 pieces of four-inch tile, hand-painted by many across the region, from the lieutenant governor through to little kids that were at the library that got recruited out to come and paint. It's hanging on the Broughton Side entrance to the Greater Victoria Public Library. That's where it's been mounted. And what is depicted here is a railway, and the rail car is a long canoe from our First Nations. The three whales are representative of the past, the present, and the future. And then there's the whole multitude of the individual pieces of art. So I will say that in...to represent the city of Callwood, I chose our lighthouse. There's more than one of them on there, but I think that the one that we have stands out the most, and a couple of council members have found it already in the picture, but it's there. So that's what we did in the summertime, and it was pulled together, and last week we unveiled it downtown. They're doing one of these across each of the provinces, and then digitally, they will bring them together in a large poster in time for the celebration next year. Further to that, we also have, that I'm just getting ready to sign, it's another Canada 150 project. It's called the Art Tree Program...or Project. And so it's an opportunity, and we've chosen our various schools within our municipality, and we're asking them to get on board, and we will be bringing an art person into the school to collaborate, and it's...I don't...is there a poster actually in here, Mercy, that shows kind of?
Yeah.
Yeah. Just... So something like this on a large poster that the students in the school will be creating, and then this goes again into a series of art show productions throughout the region, again in celebration of Canada 150. So those are a couple of things that we've been busy on. Other members of council? With anything? Yep. So we do have our Wednesday Christmas Hall light-up going on, so there'll be goodies in the parking lot, music from our neighboring schools, and lots of fun things. I even have heard that Santa's elves are coming.
And Frosty.
And...oh, and Frosty. Anyways. Anyway, so that's Wednesday, and again, we have a closure of City Hall coming up, but we have one more meeting before that happens, so we'll get that information out on the next one. There is also one discussion item that I have, and it's not a usual place for us to have a discussion items under this, but I thought that it was important to be brought forward. All of council should have it in their package. It was concerning when we heard last week from the CRD about the changing over of services that they offer, and it really, for me, awakened a need to take a look a little closer at the services that we do have, and I'm just wondering what councils feel is on this, and the recommendation before us is that the staff be directed to investigate the feasibility of initiating a CRD review...service review, and that the information be circulated to other municipalities and the capital regional district. I've heard this, and I think Counselor Day has heard the same kind of messaging from other municipalities, and maybe before we get too far into our future, that we have an opportunity to take a look and see if taxpayers are getting value and service for the dollars that are spent through the requisitioning at the CRD. So I'm opening it to council for discussion. Counselor Day?
Thank you. I guess my only question is around who would do the service review, and what would the cost be of doing that service review? I believe, looking at a comprehensive service review, may have been considered at a forum of councils, and it might have been pushed off to a future date. I can't quite recall, but is this something where we would look at what services we're participating in and how they're being accomplished, and whether or not, you know, the requisitions we're receiving are accurate and reflective of the programming?
I think the first step here is just for having staff to investigate how that might be, or what might be workable, and also to give them opportunity to have that conversation with other administrators in other municipalities as well. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Martin?
Can I just clarify the word "staff"? When we say "staff," are we referring to Callwood staff or CRD staff?
We're speaking to our staff.
Our staff.
Our CAO.
And is that realistic through you to the chair? Or through our CAO?
Yes, Your Worship...my understanding of this recommendation is that council's just directing staff to look into the possibility of doing a service review and to notify the other municipalities, which would trigger a discussion among the regional CAOs, including the CRD, about what a service review would look like, and what might be the priorities, because I don't think it would be cost-effective to do all of them. I think we're all generally in agreement that the water system is well-done, and so it would just be cherry-picking some of the ones that all of the municipalities would say, "Yep, we're interested in reviewing this service or that service."
Anyone else? There is a suggested recommendation and open to...
I would move the recommendation.
Any further conversation? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you very much for everyone's patience. We have two sets of minutes to adopt. The regular meeting of council November 28th, and the special committee of the whole meeting on also the November 28th.
I would move adoption.
Second?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? And moving on then to presentations, we have with us this evening representatives for the Canadian Federation of Independent Business here to tell us what they're here for, and we're happy to have you. Thanks, Laura, for coming.
Thank you, Mayor Hamilton, and councilors, city staff. It's a real pleasure to be here with you this evening. I have to say that making my way from Vancouver today, I felt a little bit like Santa dashing through the Vancouver snow and finding my way to a sleigh in the form of an Air Canada plane, because the heli jets were all canceled today. And I'm here to bring you some, what I think is good news and holiday cheer. And so as the mayor mentioned, I'm with the Canadian Federation of Independent Business, and we advocate for small businesses all across Canada at the municipal and provincial and federal level of government. We take our direction from our small business members. And in our advocacy, one of the things that we have known over the course of our existence for the last 45 years is that red tape is something that is a huge concern for small business. In fact, it's the second-highest priority consistently right across Canada, second only to the total tax burden, which is a slightly...slightly edges out red tape as a concern. And so in representing those members, including around 650 in the local Victoria area here, we know that as important as it is for us to be critical and point out where we think that policies could be better, it's also important to say thank you when governments are doing a good job. And so we've created a special thank you for reducing red tape that we call the Order of the Bear, and I'm going to explain the Order of the Bear in a moment. This is Bravo. I'd like to introduce everyone to Bravo, the Small Biz Thank You Bear. And I'm very pleased to announce today that Callwood mayor and council and supporting staff are the very first recipients of the Order of the Bear all across Canada. And so I'll get to why we're giving you a bear in a moment. You probably have some good ideas, but why a bear, you might ask? And, you know, this cute bear actually comes with a very serious message, and this cute bear is produced by a small business owner in North Vancouver, and her business almost...and these bears almost went extinct because of red tape. So red tape can come in various different forms. Some of it's more garden variety, others is business-threatening. And in the case of the business owner who makes these bears, she was the victim of some really terrible red tape from Health Canada, and it was so awful that she really did feel like her own government was treating her like the enemy. And I'm not going to get into all of the details of her story, but I will say that she was not doing anything wrong, and not doing anything wrong costs her business hundreds of thousands of dollars to...cost her personally hundreds of thousands of dollars to defend her business, and inordinate amount of stress to both her and to her staff. And fortunately, she was able to...in fact, her story was published in 2011 in the province newspaper, and as part of our Red Tape Awareness Week, we helped her resolve her problem with Health Canada, but as I said, it was very, very stressful for her. And she's not alone. Every business owner has a story. Again, some of them are small stories, some of them are big stories, but all of the red tape, whether it's garden variety or business-threatening, is counterproductive. It costs money and time, and takes time away from important priorities, whether it's serving your customers, or developing a business plan, or spending time with your family. And so Karen, who is the owner of Warm Buddies, who makes these bears, worked with us. She's delighted now that these bears are going to be doing good in the world by helping to celebrate red tape reduction. And Callwood's action to reduce red tape round business licensing by requiring that you only pay the fee once, and then after that, it's a very simple online renewal, is a very important, small but important, red tape reduction initiative that we're hoping that others will follow, and we felt that it really fit the bill for being worthy of a first recipient. And I want to tell you that I was further impressed by the fact that the idea came from the consultation that you did with small businesses, that you took the time to survey and feedback, get that feedback up on your website, and to take, you know, what can we do about this issue? And finally, I want to tell you that this may seem like a very small thing, but it's very important, and I want to compliment you and your staff for doing this. The language that you have on your website is very clear. It's easy to understand. You're very clear, for example, that it's going to take 10 days to get your business license. Now, we might argue that maybe it could be a little shorter, but we love that you're being clear about it being 10 days. And I also love that you use the word "love." You say, "If you have any questions, we'd love to hear from you." And that is the polar opposite of a government making its citizens feel like the enemy. In fact, it's actions like these that I think help keep the lines of communication between government and business open, and by listening and responding to the concerns, I think you're fostering a respectful relationship between government and the citizens it serves, which is entirely appropriate. So we're here to say thank you for the work that you're doing, and to say that the work that you're doing matters very much to us, and we will be encouraging, as I said, those other municipalities to follow your example. I'm going to ask my colleagues who are here, Erin and Sam, who are here to help distribute certificates, to honor each of you as the first recipient of the Order of the Bear. You will be on our website. And I will also...would like to present the mayor with Bravo, the bear, and we hope that Bravo will live at City Hall as a reminder to keep thinking for you to continue. So we're hoping that Bravo will live at City Hall as a reminder for you to continue to think about ways to reduce red tape for business. And if you want to know who will be the second recipient and third recipient across Canada, you can follow Bravo. He has an Instagram account, @smallbizbravo. He also has a Twitter account, @smallbizbravo. And I have, with the mayor's permission, I will ask if we could get a nice photo of all of you, and then we will put that up on our website, and Bravo will do some tweeting.
So I'm hoping if council, we can all pull together out front to take a moment. Thank you again so much for your braving the weather and coming out. Thank you. It's changing sides. It's the good luck bear. After, after, after. Moving on, folks, to correspondence requiring council direction, we have before us inform our report in regards to the Greater Victoria Public Library. Is that you, Counselor Martin?
Madam Mayor, I am going to excuse myself due to a potential conflict of interest, but I will be back as someone else.
As your board member on the library?
I say we limit his presentation to 10 seconds.
So Counselor Martin sits on the library board, and as this is a matter of the library board, he's going to do the presentation from that side of the microphone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the time this evening, council. It's lovely to see you all. My name's Rob Martin, 258 Porchmont Drive, here in Greater Callwood. Sorry, I don't know what page they should look at. I'm looking at page 27, which is...it titles GVPL Library Operating Agreement Renewal 2017 to 2020, whatever attachment you guys have for that one. I'll just be reading some notes off of that. So really quickly, I'm just going to give you a real quick synopsis, and then hopefully answer any questions that you guys may have. Myself, Kevin Murdock, who is a councillor in Oak Bay, who is the present chair, I'm vice-chair right now, and Maureen Sawa. We spent a fair amount of time working on the library operating agreement, as well as staff, to be honest, staff put in a lot of time. And then Victoria had a lot of concerns, so we had to go back and forth with their lawyers a fair amount, so this has been vetted a fair amount. It's also been vetted through all the CAOs with all the municipalities, so there really shouldn't be any major things that stand out for you, but I just want to give you a quick synopsis. Biggest changes from last time to this time is we're moving it from a three-year term to a four-year term, and the rationale being that we wanted to have the library operating agreement expire two years into any term, so that you always had a new councillor be...or excuse me, you always had the new council, and there wasn't people who didn't understand. Also, there was just some very housekeeping matters. For some reason, we were getting 11 payments, and it was divided over 11 months, and so what we did was just spread it over 12, so it's just a consistent once-a-month type of thing. The provision regarding the evolution of branch ownership, so just as a quick reminder to you all, every municipality that the library is within, the capital profit or the capital expenditures are the responsibility of that municipality. So since I've been on the board, Sandage has redone Emily Carr Library, so they moved it from across the street where the old Sandage Hall was, and they've moved it into Uptown. So it's there now. It's a beautiful building. It was significant in cost to Sandage. I believe Sandage paid close to, I think it was close to $2 million to do it. As you may be aware, Langford built their new library in the Vic...excuse me, I was going to say Vic West Y, but the Langford Y. They spent up to, I think it was close to $1.8 million to get that. Now, when I'm talking about capital projects, I'm talking about the facility itself, but also all the collections, so buying all the books, getting all the procedures in place, getting the computers, everything along those lines. In addition, one of our...we had a security concern regarding our servers, so one of the things that we have done in the last little while is we actually physically moved our servers from a hidden location downtown to actually to UVAC now. So UVAC is taking care of all our servers, so there's a lot more redundancies in there, so we're not expecting anything to happen there. And in the foreseeable future, within the next short periods of time, the city of Victoria wants to open up another branch in James Bay, and so they've already gone through the consultation process, and they'll be doing that. Esquimalt, their old building is basically old, so Esquimalt is...has a new town center development that's building out, and they've already allocated a spot for their new library in that. Nellie McClung, which is at Shelburne, the area, Sandage has already identified that they're going to need to replace that. And then also, one of the things, one of the little dirty secrets that Victoria doesn't want to talk about is the downtown library needs to be moved, so there's a huge capital cost, but of course, they've got the fire station, fire station number one that they're replacing, they've got the Blue Bridge, they've got the Crystal Pool, so they have a lot of capital projects. So unfortunately, Victoria...the public library keeps being pushed back, and it's not one of the decisions they want to make anytime soon. So we're in a position right now where unfortunately, the downtown library is just not meeting our needs. We ended up having to move staff, administrative staff, out of that building, because we just ran out of room. There's also some leaking problems. We had a major leak, and so obviously, you can't have water in libraries. That's not a good thing. Specifically about Wanda Fuka, just so that you know, and just as a quick reminder, there are four municipalities who participate in Wanda Fuka. There is Machosen, Callwood, Langford, and Highlands. View Royal chose not to participate, and so they actually contribute to the downtown library, so unfortunately, they're going to get hit when downtown library needs to get rebuilt, that they're going to have to pay their portion of that instead of being part of the Wanda Fuka. I believe it was two or three years ago, the Wanda Fuka branch, we had a, I believe it was a 15-year mortgage through the CRD, and we actually finished that, and we paid it off, and all four municipalities agreed that they would continue to pay the same amount every year, so that there was no decrease in funding or anything along those lines. That money's been going into a trust, and we're in a position right now where the trust will pay to continually maintain that library. We're in a position where the Wanda Fuka branch will probably need a new roof within the next year, but we already have the funds in place, so that we won't be coming for an ask to any of the municipalities. Just as one push, just to put it out there, and it's just something to be thinking about longer term, 10, 15, 20 years down the road. As I've shared with you, the numbers are quite large. You know, you're talking 1.5 million to $2 million on a capital. Right now, Langford has three libraries that they support. They support the Wanda Fuka branch, they support the Gaudi branch, it was a very small branch, and then also the Langford branch. And as Royal Baby continues to grow out and our population continues to go, there may be pressures on our council to maybe do something with Machosen, or maybe do something on our own, and it would be very prudent, in my opinion, that we start seriously thinking about that, and if that's something, a direction that you think that this council will want to go down the road, it would be better to start putting away money now, so that 10, 20 years, it's not that significant hit, that you're going to see if you just suddenly decide that we need to have another library within the districts of Callwood. The other pressures that we're having, very quickly, is even though it's the capital cost that each municipality gains, once the capital cost has occurred, that library is given off to the greater association, which means all of the members are paying for that. So for example, what's happening is we're seeing price creep with issues like James Bay and Langford opening, all those branches, because it didn't cost, for example, Callwood anything more to open the building, but it becomes our responsibility to pay for it, to maintain it, to staff it, to continue it on. So you've heard from me in the past that we don't have a lot of money for collections themselves, and that's the pressure that we're having. So what's happening is we're increasing our staffing costs because we're adding more libraries. People don't want to see a large increase in the library budget, so where do we take that money from? Nine times out of 10, we end up taking it from our collections, so we don't...we're not growing our collections the way we should. And then, housekeeping, there was just some other things within the library operating agreement, just around technologies. They're doing some very innovative things, just so you know, we're thrilled with some of the stuff we tried out in Langford. If you haven't been there, they're now doing vending machines, so that what you can either do is put your book on hold, and if you can't go during open hours, you can just go to the library after hours, and just tap your library card, and you've got your book there, or we just put fast reads in there, so you can just grab a book 24 hours a day. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have about it, but to be honest, the library operating agreement itself is pretty clean. I don't think you're going to find anything that's especially detrimental to Callwood.
Any members? Counselor Day?
Thanks. Just a couple of questions for you. I've always been aware that the building and the staffing of the building was our responsibility to provide the library itself, but I thought because the collections were shared, that the collections were a shared responsibility. So what happens in the case of a building where... So what happens in the case of a building where it is leaky and our collections are being damaged, are, is there some compensation to the collection?
Yeah, well, and I probably didn't communicate it very well, Councilor Day. It's, you are correct, collections are shared. It's just when you're first starting a new library, the entire membership doesn't provide the collections for that specific library, so what happens is it's that specific municipality has to pay for it to start the collection, then it just becomes part of the greater collections. And yeah, anything along those lines would be cost shared among all members, not just the members in that specific municipality that where it occurred, so.
And have you looked at all at, you know, where is that tipping point at which it would be more sensible to have your own library as opposed to belong to one with everyone else?
Oh, yeah, no, I would never encourage Colwood to look at being independent. I think the synergies and the cost savings that you have by being part of a larger collective is far outweighs us trying to do something on our own. The system's in place, one of, the Greater Victoria Public Library, one of their hugest, huge strengths is from a technology standpoint, not only, you know, data collection and all those things, but we have some pretty intuitive staff who are bringing software in place that are really making it user-friendly. And if you don't mind, I want to share one other really quick story with you that I'm very proud of. One of the things that I was shocked at was that Wilkinson Road didn't have a library, and they don't have a library program, and we had one of our staff, we, the library had one of their staff, start a program so that we could start actually getting the collections into Wilkinson Road and out, and he's doing that all on his own time. So, and it's a huge amount of work, because what's happening is prisoners are asking for books, books are having to go into specific containers, they get placed, they have to go through security, go through all that, they finally get in, and then the whole thing has to get repeated to get them out as well, so that contraband isn't getting out as much as contraband's getting in too. So, this person's spending a significant amount of time, 10, 15 hours a week, just to help prisoners have an opportunity to have access to our books, so it's a pretty exciting thing, and we're quite proud of that.
Great, just one final question. I noticed, I couldn't tell you what page it is on yours, but on mine, it's page five of the, of the agreement with the amendments showing in it, and it says that the board will not adopt rules that differentiate among residents and electors of the service area for delivery of library service. Is that to protect us so that there isn't kind of, you know, one rule for one municipality and a different rule for everybody else?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And one of the things too that we have to keep in mind, which is always a shock to the board members to begin with, is that all of us are at the pleasure of Victoria. Victoria is the public library, and they invited us to join them, so at any point, they could theoretically ask us to leave. Not that they will, and they've never made suggestions that they are, but it is their library system that we're participating in, not that it's, you know, that we can make up our own rules as we go along, so.
Anyone else? There is a recommendation written within the introduction, Council? And a second, or? Any further questions, comments?
Clarification, there's two recommendations, we're supposed to recommend either A or B.
A is to approve GVPL Library Operating Agreement for years 2017 to 2020, and authorize Mayor and Chief Administrative Officer to sign the agreement. A?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're clear on A. Any further conversation? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. And Councilor Martin, wherever you disappeared to.
It's like a magic box. Go out one door and show up somewhere else.
Moving along to protective services, item number 7.1.1, memorandum from our bylaw enforcement officer, amending proposed bylaw number 1594-2016, and the municipal ticket information. This is one that we had deferred back for some clarity and language. Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, through the Chair. Council asked for some clarification on, in the bylaw to ensure that homeowners had the availability to work on their properties without being penalized within the bylaw. We contacted our solicitors, and a new addition to that, section 6, 6.3, is in the memo, I won't read it. It allows homeowners to do maintenance on their property, to build an accessory building, or to repair a fence, or do repairs in their homes without being penalized. The suggested hours of work are from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, but that's up for Mayor and Council to decide and clarify the hours of work. Further into that memo, there is also a notification that Council did adopt a new business licensing bylaw, which comes into effect on January 1st, 2017. We also have to put into place an effective fine schedule as well for that bylaw, so that is also being put in here as well, and that that fine schedule will come into force and effect January 1st, 2017, so when you pass that, you won't see it immediately, it'll come into effect January 1 of 2017. And if there's any questions or any concerns, I would gladly address those questions or concerns if Council has any.
Councilor Holt?
The only concern I have, this would be a council decision, is the hours of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, which would make a statutory or a holiday or a Sunday the same as any other day of the week. Council may consider changing that to 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, which would be my recommendation. That way, it still leaves the homeowner plenty of time to work, but it does give the neighbors a little bit of a break. Otherwise, you could have the guy working on his project, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week, that can be a little tiring. I know I've lived next to a construction project for a couple of years now. So, I would move the recommendation with the hours changed from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Any discussion from Council? Councilor Martin?
Thank you. Can I just, how would that, with what was just discussed, how does the noise bylaw, specifically around decibel levels, does one override the other, or how does, how does a determination occur? So, you know, for example, you know, like, somebody's working on their house, but it's like screeching, screeching loud. They can do it, they can't do it at 9, but they can theoretically do it at 10 on that Sunday?
Through the Chair, there is no decibel reading within our bylaw. It's with what is, what's reasonable, so a homeowner can work on their home and with a skill saw or a chainsaw, whatever repair needs to be done, if they have to fall the tree, if they have to replace a fence, or they're doing a roof, they would be entitled to make that noise, there is no decibel reading. And the city is really trying not to be the big brother. Their neighbors just have to be understanding, if your neighbor has to repair his roof, and his roof is 30 years old and it needs to be replaced, and he's out there with a nail gun and he's doing it himself, doing the work, be understanding every neighbor replacing his roof. It's one weekend out of the next 30 years that he's going to be replacing a roof, so...
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Logan?
Thank you, Worship. Not that I disagree with the change, but I'm wondering what, if there are any unintended, unintended consequences by, by changing the times, and I'm thinking of the enforcement issue, you know, so you're going to get folks with an expectation that you're going to be out there.
Right now, through the Chair, right now, there is no timeline for homeowners to work on their property. Our current bylaw is what is reasonable. So, cutting your grass at 9:00 AM on a Sunday is reasonable, cutting your grass at 9:00 PM is unreasonable, is the way that we're looking at, we're looking at it from a straightforward, being a reasonable approach. We put the times in there because that would just, it made it very clear and very concise for everybody that here's, here's the playing field for you to cut your grass or do your home maintenance, rather than us being subjective and having to use our own judgment, what is reasonable and unreasonable, we're giving us more of a baseline guideline.
Thank you.
Yeah, no.
No, that doesn't count.
Councilor Martin wanted clarification that persons, if we switch to the 10 to 5, would not be cutting their grass Sunday morning at 9.
Yeah, no, so, sorry, that, yes, so what I want to clarify with this specific one, because I know there are people who like to cut, especially in the summertime, very early in the morning, before it starts getting hot, if they know it's a hot day, so I don't have a problem if they want to get their cut, lawn cut at 8. But if we said 10 to 5, can, can they or can they not cut their lawn? Like, I understand home maintenance, like pounding on the roof and stuff, but would this bylaw restrict them from not even being able to cut their lawn, say at 8:00 AM?
I'd have to look into the bylaw, there is a time provision there for cutting of, I think, a lawnmower, I think it's at 7:00 AM.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
Yeah, so if you're cutting, maybe cutting your grass at 7:00 AM, that would be just regular yard maintenance, and I think that would be exempt, what you were talking about, if I'm understanding, Councilor Nolt's suggestion is the swinging of a hammer and et cetera. The best thing is for your neighbors to talk to your neighbors, so if you have to start a, do a postal digger and you want to start at 7 o'clock in the morning, once again, it's a hot summer day, let's get as many holes dug as we can first thing in the morning, so, you know, waiting till 10, is that reasonable? If your neighbor doesn't complain, I'm not going to go looking for you.
Yep, no follow-up?
So, just one more follow-up question to you. So let's just say we did go the 10 to 5. Are we creating this bureaucracy where people are going to have to come to ask for a waiver because they have to get this thing done on this specific day and we know it's going to be noisy? Like, are we going to have a whole bunch of people coming in at 8 o'clock in the morning going, I gotta put this up, even though it's a Sunday? Like, that's just my one worry, is like, we're sitting here doing a whole bunch of waivers for noise.
There is a possibility of that. That is one of the reasons of looking at the broader time from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. If you do have a project and you are wanting to get it done earlier in the, in the day, that would create less of a bureaucracy. If you're putting in the time, at the benchmark at 10 o'clock and somebody needs to start earlier, they would potentially have to come in and ask for a waiver. Once again, am I going to go out looking for that? No, I'm not. If the neighbors aren't going to complain, I'm not going to go looking for it.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay. Councilor Day?
I just found the section, we're talking about the construction or commercial noise section, but for the lawnmower, using a lawnmower, leaf blower, gas-powered weed eater, or roadatiller, you're not allowed to use it before 7:00 AM or after 9:00 PM on any day. So, it is already covered off in that, the part that we're varying is just the, the commercial part, and I would suggest that if somebody's putting on a new roof, for example, which is a noisy endeavor, they should probably talk to their neighbors and say, hey, you know, we're going to be putting on a roof, hope you don't mind, kind of thing, would be the, probably the best proactive approach. And then I think with this, that, that gives people some comfort that generally speaking, they should be able to sleep in a little bit on Sunday morning.
Anyone else? Call the question then on the recommendation before us? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries?
People should be getting up to go to church.
Item number 7.2.1, under Finance and Administration, memo in regards to updates to cash handling and collection policy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Normally, something like this is not a huge deal that we would run before Council, it's kind of a housekeeping matter, but I did want to just bring to your attention one change, and interestingly enough, it kind of ties into the Order of the Bear this evening, which is trying to make it easier for our small business people to do business with Colwood City Hall. So one of the main changes that we're recommending is an increase in the amount of Visa that we will accept at our front counter from $250 to $2,500, and this will mainly affect our small business people, like plumbers and electricians that will assist them. It certainly will not make any difference to the awnees or the Royal Bay's who have much larger permit fees. And a lot of it is just housekeeping behind the scenes. We are trying very hard to modernize it and make it easier for people to do business, and also how we have people pay us, whether it's through pre-authorized payments in future with their property taxes, and behind the scenes, staff are working very hard to simplify our accounts payable, so that we're paying people by electronic fund transfer, so that if there's a mail strike, it also means that there's far less individual transactions going through our banks. We've done some cleanup here, just to make sure that staff are not keeping records of people's Visa numbers, including the security features, so we've made it very clear in here how that's to be handled. Again, some of this is just housekeeping and making sure that we're keeping on the right side of auditors and the other bodies that do check us out on a regular basis, so... That basically is a summation of what you have in front of you this evening, and just looking for your approval for those changes, or if you'd like to see something different.
Anything from, yep?
So, I know, I know we're not, oh, excuse me, credit cards may not be used for payments under $2,500 for property tax. Do you, do you ever anticipate that we'll get to that point?
Well, it's interesting you would ask that. At this point, we're not anticipating that credit cards can be used for property tax payments at all, okay? And I had a chat with our counterparts over in Langford, they have something called a third-party Visa, and I was very surprised to learn that less than 1% of their tax revenue is collected by Visa. We did look into it very carefully, but we were not offered the same deal that the Langford staff were. Their customers only pay 1.34% Visa fees. They were going to say to us that our customers, sorry, other way around, their customers were going to have to pay 3%, ours were going to pay 1.34%, which sounds good, but they were going to charge the city of Colwood a $5,000 signup fee and a minimum of $1,500 per year, times five years. And when we looked into that, and some of the details of doing business with this firm, I didn't find them, they're sort of a, they weren't that easy to do business with, they didn't respond to my inquiries, and I'm concerned, like, we're dealing with taxpayers' money here, so I thought we'll pursue some other avenues right now, which is to try and set up something called pre-authorized payments, whereby people can sign up and then every month, a certain amount comes out of their bank account, and the good part about that is better for our cash flow, it, you know, evens it out, so we don't get these big lump sums. And we're trying to take some of the pressure off the front counter, and we are succeeding, we are seeing fewer, fewer people come in, they are paying online, and so I just didn't, at this point, think it was a wise use of our, our money.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, staff? And you need a recommendation that's before us in the memo, page one, at the bottom of page one?
I'll move the recommendation. Oh, excuse me, sorry, I guess it would be minus number three.
Right, yeah, one and two.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Moving into our final section this evening, bylaws, number, bylaw number 1661 for final reading, it's the miscellaneous fees and charges bylaw number 1603, amendment number one.
Move final.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. 8.2, bylaw number 1623, final reading for the Advisory Planning Commission bylaw. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Third item, bylaw number 1594, for first, second, and third readings, this is the noise control bylaw number 1594.
Move introduction.
Just, sorry, a point of clarification, just that is with the 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM change in there as well?
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried.
Move second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. 8.4, bylaw number 1654, again, for first, second, and third readings, it is the MTI bylaw number 1314.
Move introduction, Your Worship.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Any, any, any comments? Any, any, any comments? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries?
Where are we? Second?
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried? Final item, bylaw number eight, item number 8.5, bylaw number 1595, for first, second, and third readings, this is the road closure and dedication removal bylaw for a portion of Latoria Road between Latoria Boulevard and Machosen Road.
Move introduction?
We can, second.
Oh, sure, second.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried?
Move second? Second, second.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Through you to the staff, I, I'm not highly educated on this one, so I, I was under the impression that we were going to, or the Royal Bay wanted to keep that road at one point, so has that always been part of the plan, that they were going to kill that road?
Your Worship. Latoria, the portion that we're talking about.
The old Latoria.
Yeah, the old, the old Latoria that is currently temporarily closed, has to be closed to be able to transfer title, so we, we have to close it, raise title, and then dispose of it, or sell it essentially, to Royal Bay. And, and then Royal Bay will incorporate it into their future subdivision plans.
And then give it back to us?
Well, it may not be in the exact configuration that, that currently is at this point in time, and that's why it has to, has to go, has, we have to raise title and transfer it, and then it gets consolidated into the adjacent properties that are there today. So, there's two stages, where we'll go through, if Council agrees to this, Council will, will go through a closure process, and then there'll be advertisement to dispose of the, of the road, and we'll be disposing it in consideration for the Latoria Boulevard that was dedicated to us, which is a greater landmass than, than the old Latoria Road that's being closed.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Day?
Thanks, I just want to go on record as the, the reason that I am opposed to disclosure is I'm opposed to the relocation of Latoria Road, and have been since it was relocated. It, I, I don't feel it is in our, our best interests. I know that we have a, a good quality road with a, a new standard that I think is beneficial, but I have to unfortunately oppose the closure of the road because I think it could still be a useful road.
Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Need third reading?
Move third reading, Your Worship.
All those in favor? And opposed? Motion carried? Looking to move in camera, please?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried?
Thank you.